Good evening, everybody. Glad to see everybody. Welcome to our meeting tonight. Obviously, you know, everybody's coming in after the holiday and everything else. And we have our kids back after after a week. So it's great to see all of you as well. I hope everybody had a great holiday. We're going to get started and call this to order. Get our meeting started. And first thing is we're going to make sure to see if there is any public comment or anything that needs to be stated before we begin. All right, thank you. And so we'll get rolling right away. The first thing we need to do is on letter C of our agenda, action discussion. And we need to make sure that we approve the unconfirmed minutes. Obviously, those were sent out to everybody. So if we could get a motion to approve those minutes from the last meeting that we held. Okay, we have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion related to those minutes that were sent? And we do appreciate the emails that come in related to that. So if you do have questions, don't hesitate to make sure you let us know if there's something that we either left off or you have a question about related to what we did in the last meeting. All right, can I get a get a vote on that? All in favor of adopting the minutes from the November 14th meeting? Say aye. Any opposed? All right, motion carries. We will now move on to information and discussion items. You can see the list there that we have. And we will, we're going to move through these items. Obviously, there's there's elements to our last meeting that are going to come up in here. So, you know, when you have questions to pieces or things that we're moving through tonight, please don't hesitate to to interject. One thing that we're not doing is we're not saying, hey, wait till the end of a presentation. So we want to make sure that you guys are able to do that and still keep that interaction as a committee with those presentations. Everything's related to what we did in the last meeting. If you remember, when we left off, we were identifying, we had left off looking at those needs that we saw in the Dyser District related to the bond. And we, you know, the bond elements. And what I say by that is is that we were talking about those types of things that are related towards building and capital and things like that. And so there is elements to that that we also wanted to do is bring in and find out some information if we can survey our community as well to see what they saw and do that by by having a really a nonpartial, unbiased approach to that piece. So we can get some information from all of our stakeholders throughout the Dyser District. And so what I'd like to do at this time is we're going to ask Paul Bentz to come forward, please. And and Paul's going to be able to talk to us. And he's he can explain what his affiliation is and how he will be working with the district to help us do that. So I'm going to hand it over to you, Paul.
Thank you. Fantastic. Good afternoon, good evening, everyone. My name is Paul Bentz. I'm the Senior Vice President of Research and Strategy at High Ground Public Affairs here in Phoenix, Arizona. We are a long running public affairs firm that does a wide variety of information, particularly in the school district sphere. I'm specialized in polling and public opinion research. And what we like to say is, I'm not here to tell you what you want to hear. I'm generally one that you bring in when you need to tell you what you need to hear. So what we specialize is in public opinion surveys and message testing that gets you an idea of the overall electorate and what they are thinking about when it comes to a potential electoral proposal or the things that you're exploring as a group. One thing that I want to make abundantly clear is that nothing that we do should be considered advocacy or influencing the outcome of the election, which are both not allowed under law. Everything that we do is research focused to give you accurate and unbiased information. So what we're going to do is talk a little bit about how we perform survey research. We've been doing this for more than a decade, almost two decades now when it comes to survey research. The firm's been around almost 30 years. What we do, and we've also been recognized as the four time winner of Best Pollster by the Arizona Capital Times. Several of our recent, we've done dozens upon dozens of these types of survey research. But here's a list of several of our more recent polling organizations that we've worked with, including the Center for the Future of Arizona on their Arizona Voters Agenda, as well as Education Forward, which used to be called Expect More for those who have been around a long time, as well as a wide variety of both elementary school, high school districts, as well as unified school districts. We've worked on both bond and, well, I just lost the cap to this thing. We worked on both bond as well as override efforts. Just don't want to step on it. That's the, we've worked both on bond and override efforts. We've also worked with districts that are considering or looking at both. The goal here, though, is to get an understanding of what the electorate is thinking. And I know you are all registered voters, I'm sure. But by virtue of you being in this room tonight, you know more than 99% of likely voters who are going to show up and vote next year. The presidential election next year in 2024 will be a high voter turnout election. But one thing to bear in mind is that only about 75% of the adult population is actually registered to vote. That means one out of every four people that you talk to that says they're registered to vote is probably lying to you. But more than that, when we talk about record high voter turnout, like in 2020, the presidential election, when we talk about 79.9% voter turnout, what we're actually talking about is 79.9% of that 75%. When you translate that out, it's a little over half of the adult population is actually participating in our elections. So one of the things that we make sure that we are doing is talking to voters, people who have a history of participating in our elections, to get an understanding of what they're thinking and why they're interested. And that's why we work with a lot of the school districts that we have, because a lot of these areas are certainly ones that have faced challenges in the past and certainly want to understand what their electorate is thinking about these issues. So a little bit about the survey itself, just so that I get these questions. So I figured we'd go ahead and cover them at the outset here. We do professional live caller surveys. These are operators that call individuals on both home phones and cell phones. We direct self, direct dial cell phones as required by law. People will still pick up the telephone and participate in these surveys. I get that question a lot. We take a lot of time and effort to ensure that our phone numbers are not blocked, you know, like the blood services or these other ones that sometimes go straight to voicemail. We are very conscious about ensuring that we get people on the phone. There will probably come a time in which telephonic surveys are not the gold standard for public opinion research. They certainly still are, particularly in Arizona. One of the reasons, as you'll see, is we still have a much older population. We still have a lot of landlines. But we do call people based on what their voter registration is. So when you fill out that envelope and you give that phone number for them to verify, that number goes into the voter registration database. And so we can call you with the number that you most prefer. So that's one of the things that we do to make sure that we still are able to get a good connection rate. We're recommending a 400 sample, which is a plus or minus 4.89 margin of error. We would like to balance that based on age, registration, location, and other factors to ensure we get a balanced sample that's reflective of the entire district from top to bottom, the growing areas and everything else. We will use zip codes, precincts, and other things to get a regional approach. We will also use voter registration based on their age, as well as their party registration to ensure that we get an accurate sample. These we get from the file, people, we have their name, we have their phone number, we have their party, we have their age. Because, again, just like those folks that maybe say they're registered to vote but are not, people tend to misrepresent or maybe, you know, fib a little bit about their age. Maybe they're feeling a little younger that day or maybe they're feeling a little bit more independent. So what we do is we set quotas based on what we see when it comes to likely voters. I did a quick look at the Dyser District itself. Of your total population, which I know is much larger than this, you have about 120,000 registered voters. That means those are the people who could show up in the election. When we talk about likely voters, the people who have a strong chance of participating in the election, that number falls to about 75,000 total likely voters. So we would focus within that audience and that universe and get an understanding of what they are. The question I get a lot is, well, then, why don't we talk to the rest of those folks? They might show up. Well, my goal is to give you accurate information based on what's likely to happen, not what, again, we'd hope to happen. If more folks show up, we can give you some ideas of what that might look like. But whatever we're talking about from a proposal standpoint, we want to have an understanding of what it would do or how it's likely to perform within the electorate as it stands. A couple of things to bear in mind as we look at this general electorate. It's about 44% Republican, it's about 28% Democrat, and about 28% Independent or Other. There is no Independent Party in the state of Arizona. It's a small I. So they're really, we like to also call those unaffiliated voters. Those are the folks that have chosen to not be one of the major two parties. This is not the same as registration, okay? You may have heard, for example, that the state of Arizona now has more independent registered voters than any other party. Independents are now the largest group in the state. They're basically divided about a third, a third, a third, with a little bit more leaning towards independent. The issue is, though, that's not how participation works. Folks that we see is the folks of the two parties tend to overparticipate, whereas unaffiliated voters tend to underparticipate. So we want to reflect that in this data to ensure that you have accurate results. In addition to that, 40% of the likely voters in the Dyser District are over the age of 65. Your electorate, if you could compare it to the state, about half of the electorate in the state of Arizona is over the age of 55. But in Dyser in particular, 40% are over the age of 65. So we will want to make sure we reflect that cohort and get an understanding of how those folks are thinking and feeling and really pay attention to that information, because that's going to be incredibly helpful for you. Because only about 32% of your respondents will have kids under the age of 18 living at home. Seems shocking the first time you hear it, but this is a pretty reflective because we have a large retirement community. Retirees show up and vote no matter what. It really comes down to who shows up and votes around them. That's what determines turnout. So if you look, for example, in 2023, we had about 33 to 37% turnout, depending on what city or municipality. Surprise, for example, had about that range turnout. That's that 65 and older crowd. That's who shows up in an off cycle election. Off cycle elections are guaranteed to be lower turnout elections. They're guaranteed to be older electorate. They generally are guaranteed in a community like this to be a more conservative leaning electorate. So as you look at an even year versus an odd year, bear that in mind, as I think we're going to talk a little bit about that in a bit here, is that not all elections are created equal. I think folks sometimes think those who vote, vote, and, you know, they vote every time. Well, when the president's not at the top of the ticket, voter turnout is down significantly. So what we're talking about right now, though, the good news is, 2024 is a high voter turnout election. It's likely to be one of our higher ones. Turnout will somewhere between probably 74 and 79%. I don't, at the moment, predict it will get to be as high as we saw in 2020 because we're facing likely a presidential rematch that tends to not create as much enthusiasm among younger voters. But this will be the most younger voters that you'll see in the next four years. So that's something to bear in mind. But they turn out at a much lower pace when you compare it to, say, like the 65 and older crowd. Yes, sir. That's today's numbers right now. I ran them this morning, yes. So that's what that, that's what the electorate looks like. Now, likely voters, one thing to bear in mind is these are people who have a history of voting in elections. So new registrants and other things, we take them into account and we will poll them because if you've recently registered, you're more likely to participate. But this is the folks that have a longstanding track record of definitely showing up. What's really funny is in basically 20 plus years that I've been doing this, that generally, that likely voter universe, when you run it, gets pretty close to what we expect. If you go on Election Day and look at what the total number is, they're pretty close. It'll be a few, it'll be a little bit higher. But that's what we expect sort of the floor of the electorate to look like is about 70,000 total voters or so. So I'm going to come back in a couple of weeks with a survey instrument. So I'm giving you the spoiler alert. I'm telling you what we're going to ask so you can get an idea of what the strategy is behind this to give you a good understanding. So when I come back with the questions a couple of weeks from now, to give you an idea of what we're aiming for. And I did distribute a memo. I'm sure they're going to share it with you that gives you a little bit of some of this strategy. First thing that we're going to do is some introduction questions, a few warm up questions about the right direction, wrong direction of the community, maybe some opinions about the district itself, quality of education, teacher funding, things like that. Some, some issues to get people understanding and get an idea that they're, we're going to be talking about education questions. Folks will stay on the phone and answer these questions because they're interesting. We're not asking a bunch of horse race questions, a bunch of would you vote for this person or that person? We can be on the phone somewhere between 10 and 15 minutes and get an accurate response from these folks on these questions based on, you know, the history of doing this. So we start with some warm up questions. And then what we do is a pretest. The first thing that we will ask them is reflective of the ballot language itself. And here's why. If I asked someone, would you like to give more money for education? The number will say hi. The number of people who say yes will be pretty high. If you ask them, would you like to pay taxes to fund education? The number comes down. If I ask them, would you like to exceed the revenue control limit for a period of eight years, starting in fiscal year 2425? The number goes even further down. Well, the issue is, that's what they're going to see on the ballot. There's not a would you vote yes for schools? If there was, my polling job would be a lot, lot easier. Unfortunately, what we do is we use the language itself the way it's required in the statute. That gives you the most accurate view of where we're starting. And we call that the pretest. The idea here is just to get an understanding of what today, where people are. If they saw the language, if they were to be given this poll, where do they start? Okay? And that the goal there is because we haven't added any bias or any additional information for them. Because if I said, if you knew it did that, if you knew it did this, the number would likely improve. But the issue is, we can't guarantee that folks get that information. We can only test what happens when they do get it, okay? So we start with the pretest. And then from there, what we like to do is go into a section called what we generally call the program or project test. And so it would be, say, if it was new school construction or say, building renovation or new air conditioners or school buses, we'll test those various items, we'll randomize and rotate them. So some folks would get school buses first, other folks would get new school construction first. And we have them rate those on a scale of one to five. One meaning not at all important to five meaning very important. It's the Likert scale. What that gives us is some intensities and an understanding of what people support or what they don't support. And it's really helpful for you to get an idea of what really rises to the top and maybe what may be less so. It's not necessarily the ultimate decider. I don't necessarily recommend that you use it to pick which projects are in or out, but really gives you something, if there's something that sticks out, like school security that people really, really want or is there something really challenging right now that maybe they don't want to think about in this economy? Okay, so that's sort of the idea to think about that. When I started doing this, and in fact, Dyser was one of the first ones we worked with on this back in 2015, what we found, for example, is things like All Day K, when you're testing an override, didn't test as well because it impacts such a smaller segment of the, whereas some other programs did much better. But what we found is a lot of districts were leading with All Day K because it started with A. So they would alphabetize what the program paid for. So just even the idea of being able to offer them in the most appealing order or the order that they is most impactful to the electorate can be very helpful to help people gain mind share and help them understand what you're going for. So that's what that program and project list can really help you with. From there, what we do is a reason test. And the idea here is if I ask 400 people why they support or why they don't support the project, that we get 400 different answers. And then you'd have 400 different responses to read through. And that creates a lot of challenges. And what we really are looking for is sentiment. What are the sentiments that people are concerned about? Things like growth, keeping up with growth. Things like, you know, the national news that we see talking about controversial subject matter. Things like inflation or, since we have a large 65 and older population living on a fixed income. Do they understand the need for increased school security? Do they understand the need for increased teacher pay? Those types of items. So we test some reasons for, the things that might motivate people and what would really give them those understanding of what's motivating them in the affirmative. But we also want to test what is motivating people in the negative. And what I, I get this a lot. People say, well, why do we want to test negative items here? Well, the thing is, you need to know what's impacting folks, especially when you have 70% of folks that don't have kids at school. They are much more likely to be getting their news from cable, they're getting their news about schools from cable news or from some other source besides the school newsletter. So you need to know how it's impacting their opinions about public education, about the Dyser District, and what they're getting out of it. So what we do is get those, understand that reason test. And then after that, what we do is we call the post test. We ask them again over the course of a survey. Sometimes people change their mind. I'd like to ask you again, knowing just what you know right now, would you vote yes or no? That gives us an understanding of how solid the yes is, how solid the no is, who the movers are or who are the people that maybe see some confusion on it. And it gives you a really good, accurate snapshot of the electorate. Then we end with a couple of demographic questions. Generally ask them if they have kids at home so that we can cross tab or get, look at kids versus no kids, is there a difference there? We'll ask some other questions like that, you know, sort of their ideological leaning, the very conservative versus, you know, very progressive to get an understanding of what the breaks are there too. So we can get a really accurate snapshot of where things are. Again, we can accomplish this sort of over the course of a 10 to 15 minute survey, depending on the length and depth of the questions. Our goal between now and the next time I see you is I'm going to work with some of the folks to put a draft instrument together. Then I'm going to bring that instrument to you and we're going to walk through it together as a group so that you can see the questions. Because I want you to be comfortable with the questions so that you know what we're asking so that you know that we're asking the things that you care about. The last thing I want is for you to say, well, if you'd asked it this way instead of that way, we would have got a totally different result. So that's one of my major goals that we will do is making sure that we're sharing those questions with you to get another, get information. One thing that was on a slide that I didn't address, but is, I just want to mention is, when we do the survey, we will call on behalf of the calling firm. And you may get a phone call. But it'll be from the polling of the research agency. It will not be from on behalf of the district. It will not be on behalf of your committee. Because what we're trying to do is, again, that's another thing where we're trying to ensure that we don't introduce any bias. We don't want extra employees who wouldn't normally take the survey to answer it because they want to be helpful. We don't want folks that maybe have a bone to pick with the district to take it simply because they want to have their opinion heard. We want people to give their information freely and openly, not telling the survey researcher what they think they want to hear, but what they need to hear. So what will, what you'll get out of this, though, is folks will get very different experiences out of the survey. Because like I mentioned, that project and programs, those will all be rotated and randomized. So each person will not get the same introduction. Same thing with the reason test. Some folks will get negative sentences first, other folks would get positive first. The result is, I get calls all the time where people will say, boy, I just took that survey and it was really favorable the whole way through. And then five minutes later, I'll get another call. I just took a survey and it was really, really negative. And it'll be the same survey. And that's the goal at the end of the day is that we ensure that you can count on these results. So that's basically what I have, just to give you sort of a quick primer on on how we research and why we do it. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. Yes, ma'am. That's correct. Exactly. So we call the person, we ask for the specific person. They, not only that, they can't hand it over to somebody else. We know exactly who we're talking to. There's not a way for somebody to come in and gig this survey. They can't come in and it's not like an online survey where they can come, send the QR code around or they could click it. That's one of the things I get questions about a lot is, well, you know, polling is so bad these days. Well, you know, we can't count on the results. Well, the way we do it, you can. Because we call specific people, we call them directly from the list. We ask for that individual. If they don't answer, we move on to the next person. We don't do texts, we don't do emails, we don't do a website. All of it is done with an operator doing a scientific survey with the individual who answers it. And that allows us to continue to have reliable results. Great question. Yes, ma'am. Right. Oh, sorry for the online, sorry. Where, what type of voting history are we getting? Are we going back to 2020? Are we going to this most recent 2023 surprise bond election? What we actually do is we have all of the elections. After every single election cycle, including 2023, we update all the voters' information so we know what elections they voted in. But to your original question, yes. What we're emphasizing is people who have a history of voting in general elections. So we'll be looking at 2022, 2020, and then also, you know, basically 2018. And we're looking for folks that have that of history of voting in at least two of those elections. We will look and see if they have a history of voting in off cycle as well. But we're really emphasizing their participation in the general election. Other questions, folks? Yes, sir. Yes. So we do verify that they're in the district. We do verify that against the voter file and how they're registered to vote. Not everybody's phone number is a 63 phone number or 602 or 480. We have area codes from all over. You know, I don't know, Bill, I don't think your number is in Washington anymore. But, you know, we have, you'll be surprised with the number of of area codes that we track. We also, I just looked at it today. You have a 106 year old individual who's still alive and kicking and votes in every election. So we, yeah, we have, we do verify the folks and make sure that they live in the district as well. Yes, sir. That's a great question. The question was, how long are we, how long is the survey in the field? We are generally in the field a week or less. And so what, it's a period of time that we try the people, we try to call them back. But we have a big enough universe with 75,000 individuals that we can call from, that we can replicate and use those age, party, gender, region to get a reflective sample. You know, it does take several connects. I will not be, it's not only 400 phone calls. We're not calling 400 people and hoping and praying they call them back. These are thousands of phone calls, but we do monitor it. What we're always trying to make sure of is that folks, you know, we, we track all of our surveys, make sure that people are not hanging up on us, making sure that we're getting answers. When we were doing a survey about election results, for example, we were doing one once that we asked a question early on. Do you believe there was significant fraud that impacted the outcome of the election? That was question five out of a 20 question survey. And our survey was only supposed to be 10 minutes long. Our survey ended up being, when we were doing that, people were giving us 20, 30 minute responses. We couldn't get them off the phone. So we obviously stopped that survey and and fixed it. Because we, you know, so we're monitoring these things all the time. And we actually put it at the end of the survey, took yes or no as a question and said, thank you. And terminated the call. Because that was all we wanted was the yes or no portion of it for cross tabulation purposes. But we monitor these things all the time. That methodology that I shared here, for school districts, this is tried and true. We've done this for almost 10 years with a lot of different school districts with a lot of reliable results, to give you an idea. And polling is a snapshot in time. So if if the school wins three blue ribbons tomorrow, your number could be better. If something terrible were to happen, it could be worse. But the poll gives you an idea, just as you as a group, to navigate and get an understanding of what environment that you're dealing with in. Anything else? Thank you so much for your time. I appreciate it.
And thank you, Paul. Obviously, he'll be back at our, at our next meeting. And that'll be the chance for us to look at a draft of a survey and get some, and be able to provide some feedback for that. Really, the, the importance of that, as he had mentioned, is really gives us an opportunity to really dig into some of the information that we want to know as a community. So I'm going to hand it over now. I know Mary Dell is ready to go, so we're going to let her take the next item and.
Actually, it's just finalizing this. Yes, so just wanted to finalize this piece because on the agenda item, we talk about the results of history or history of of election results. And so we went through and just summarized, just really more for context or for you to see the brief history in the last 10 years as it relates to Dyser. So I know Mr. Bentz referred to some of the years where you see a lot of participation, those presidential election years, you see the results there. But just starting in 2013 was the last time in the last 10 years the district went out solely for a bond. So that was $86.8 million. So that was, that did not pass. The 14 override, and I know we briefly spoke to this in our initial meeting when we kind of went over the override timeline. So the 2014 override, that was already year five of that override. That if it did not pass, it was going to start getting phased out. So that did fail in 2014. Starting in 2015, it started, we went into the one third reduction. So we went back out again to the voters and that year it did pass. So we went back out again to the voters, and that year it did pass. So we restored the, the override. In 2019, it was an early continuation. So that was a year four of the override, as we kind of start thinking about the timeline of the overrides. That year, it also failed. That was the same year a bond was also listed on the ballot with the override. So that was in 2019. So both of those items failed on the ballot. And then in 2020 was the most recent one. So that was year five of that override. So if that didn't pass in that year, it was going to start getting phased out by a third, starting in 2021. So in 2020, that passed. So just wanted to provide a little bit of context. And so where that, where does that take us now? We're now 2023, we're in year three of the override. So as we start thinking about just the conversations, 2024 would now be an early continuation of the override. And then as we're talking about bonds as well. And so just wanted to have the committee kind of think about this in the context, and also in the context of what Mr. Benz mentioned, just what we see voter turnout, what are the items that, you know, are, are of interest? And then just generally wanted to provide a little bit of context. Any questions on that, just a brief overview? I'm sorry, what was the cause of not having, pursuing it again? So what was the cause of not pursuing it? I think a little bit of, of that, too. Because in 2019, it was, I mean, it, it failed. And so we really wanted to go back. And then 2020 hit, the pandemic hit. So we really wanted to, what was the immediate need? Well, we knew we wanted to immediately maintain our programs and people and, and personnel that are supported through the override. So we did not pursue necessarily the bond for some of those reasons as well. And then now we're already in 2023, which has now been 10 years since the most recent time that we went out for a bond. And so we see the, you know, what's hit, well, inflation has hit. We now have 10 years even, you know, that, that our buildings and everything have aged. And so that's where the committee comes, to kind of talk about what are those high needs or the priorities that we think the community would be interested in. What percentage they pass and fail? I would have to pull that information up. But the one with, if I recall, the one in 20, the 2020 did pass. It wasn't, the ones that have passed, they, they're not landslides. I want to say even the 2015, when the override did pass, it passed about 51%. But I have to go back and confirm the numbers. I think most people, it was very close. And when they have failed, they have really failed. I want to say one of those was, I'd have to go back. I think the MNO override was, or the bond, I think the very first one was like a 60% fail. Like, they've been pretty, pretty large fails. And the passes have been narrow passes. So they have not been landslides on the passing rate.
Just to, to add to that a little bit, and there's a historical piece. I mean, we, we gave a snapshot here. We know we're going to get more information from Paul at the next meeting. But we, we also have information related to other election results. It was pointed out in the very last meeting. If you guys will recall, you guys were, you guys were identifying recent elections that just happened. And I think to our committee member who just pointed out, knowing what the election results are, I think that's something else that we could put up there. So what I'd like to do is, is probably bring forward a very specific data chart that can show in the West Valley for you guys to see, and then see the percentages, also to see DICEAR. So we're going to do that. We knew we were getting a snapshot tonight. We're going to provide that for you. You're going to see that so that we know before, obviously, before we finish on the 12th, that meeting, that you guys will have that information. The other, the other part of that question, I just do want to clarify. They talk about the gap in here. You guys recognize the pandemic. Remember that also in 20, between 2020 and moving forward, there was that element, too, where we had some kids at home, some kids at school. I mean, you saw all those different elements that were happening. And then also on top of that, you'll remember that there was providing of money, as, as Mary Dell explained, was there was an element of trying to maintain, sure, schools are still operating. And a lot of that came through like ESSER funding and some other types of funding that came in. So I don't think it was really appropriate even for schools to probably even look at. And I don't think, and I don't know the history of pursuing of bonds and overrides during that time. But my guess is, is that there wasn't as much pursuance of that even in other districts. That would be my, my first guess, but doesn't mean I'm accurate on that. But that also would relate to why there is a gap up till this point as well.
And I did just want to add, in, in 2020, it was being also just explored of looking at a, a bond and an override. And I know our, our governing board at the time was also like, if we're going to pursue both, we want to ensure that, you know, is this really what the community needs? I think at that time, then, when there were some committees formed, the focus at that time was in the override. It's just to ensure that we can, especially during the pandemic, and we didn't want to kind of create, you know, additional situation for our folks of, of being, you know, unemployed. And so we wanted to ensure that that was our main need at that time, was really restoring, maintaining the programs and the people we had in place. So it's not to say that a bond hasn't been explored since 2019. It actually has, it's been in the conversation. But just as far as what was the priority for the district at the time was the override. The question is, what is the strategy? Do districts usually go out on year four of just essentially going out an early continuation in case it doesn't pass, then you can go back out again? I know the question was directed to Mr. Benz. Let me bring you the mic.
Statistically, you could renew your override every year if you wanted. The issue with an override is that it lasts seven years. And in the final three years, it steps down if you, it is not renewed by a third every year. So that's why most districts go out in the fourth year is to avoid even having to have the discussion about regarding cuts. Because if you wait till the fifth year, you, the first third is dependent on the passage or failure of the, of the override itself.
And I do, I, I think that's a really great point. It kind of leads into our next item, is going back to talking about override. Remember, and that's the, you know, the charge of this committee is in the end to determine, none, both, one or the other. I mean, you, you're deciding what to, what to bring forward and recommend. And you'll make that decision as a committee. But one of the things that obviously that we've been exploring in here is, you know, it's important for us, is we recognize what, what that override is about. And we're going to hear a little bit more. But we're also recognizing and bringing forward, and you guys did some brainstorming last meeting, and what are, what we're going to be looking at the next two meetings, what are some of the essential needs that we want to do explore within the district? So I think that's the other part of it, too. Because we are going to come to a point where you guys are going to have to make that, that decision. Because that's, that task helps us. And I know the surveying piece will help us with that, with that process as well. So I think with that point, it's a good transition to our second item on here under information discussion, of looking at districts spending over your discussion as it relates to the override.
Right, thank you very much. So we're going to, if I can find my workbook, there it is. Too many papers, excuse me. Okay, so this was, just a continuation, wanted to have last time. I know we were coming up on time, and so we had to cut some of our conversation and, and the working groups' time short. So if you recall, we went over the bond, just the history on that. The main identified needs, I know as a group, we kind of just jotted down and brainstormed some ideas of what the committee's kind of hearing, or just in general, just feedback on high identified needs. And so we wanted to do the same process for the override, and just take a few minutes to revisit the override, discuss again how we're utilizing it within the district, and then just really allow, you know, a few minutes for you as a committee to same process, same exercises before, just kind of jot down, are those still areas of focus, of identified need that we would consider for an upcoming renewal? Or are there other areas that we can look into and pursue? So just a brief recap, because I know we've, we've thrown a lot of terms. And so the very first day, I think we talked about bonds versus the override, and that there is no such thing as a bond override. There's no cap, there is a capital override, but that's not where we're speaking to. But I hear the words used interchangeably. And so we just want to be sure we, especially as a committee, like we mentioned, you guys already know so much more than a lot of, of our folks that we speak to about this. We want to make sure you're really the ones that are out there kind of speaking, speaking to it and understanding the concept even further. So bonds, again, we mentioned, those are the tangible, useful lives, longer than a year, the fixed assets, the buses, the equipment, the buildings, et cetera. Overrides are those items that are used to pay for programs. So again, they're used, provide additional funding to support what happens in the classroom. So again, there's three types of overrides. What we have here in DICEART is the MNO override. Because we do have the ability to go out to the voters for an MNO override, a special override, and some districts have capital overrides. So at DICEART, we just focus on an override for the last 20 years that's been in place. So that, again, it provides funds for teacher salary benefits, supplies, general operations. So again, this is just above and beyond what the state provides. Up to 15% of your revenue control limit was, so essentially the budget. So this is just, again, a recap, we've spoken a little bit about it. So just wanted to put this timeline up there again, to familiarize yourselves with it. If you recall, we went out in 2020, it was passed. So 2021, '22 was the first year. So we are now in year three of that seven-year cycle that starts phasing out year six, if not renewed or continued after year five. So just wanted to put that out there, because we're talking about the potential, if it is recommended to go out in November of '24, that would put us in year four. Or do you wait for year five? That would put you into November of '25. So just wanted to put that, that context out there for you. And then it starts getting phased out by year six, which is what happened in that 2015 fiscal year. But just a reminder, this is an outline of just the various programs that we fund through our override currently. So when we talk about, we have in the pamphlet, maintain current class sizes. Well, really what that is, is to ensure we have sufficient resources to employ. This is approximately, comes out to about 130 teachers to help maintain the current class sizes. So when it says reduce class sizes, it's basically meaning if that override is not in place, those would go up, because it's essentially the 130 teachers or so. The pamphlet spoke to keeping teacher salaries competitive. I'll go over a little bit in the next slide, how much that is. That's really providing additional funding to be able to supplement and be able to support those salary increases that we're able to provide. Keeping extra math reading supports in place, maintain arts, P and athletics. So that, again, just maintaining those above and beyond. It supports interventionists, it supports the ability to have band, art, et cetera. I know that the year that we had to start phasing out, those were some of the areas that were cut. So those are areas that are supported through it. And then continue to offer the, the free full-day kindergarten. So as a reminder, the state does fund half-day kindergarten. And so typically, districts look to overrides to be able to provide above and beyond what the state provides, which in our case is that funding for full-day kindergarten. So this was the breakdown, this was provided to the governing board at the beginning of October, just the use of our override funds. And so this is the breakdown for, this is 2320, I'm sorry, fiscal year 2223 was $23.9 million. In 2324's budget, we mentioned last time, it's about $24.5 million is what's in the override amount for this, this fiscal year. So that's a breakdown, about $2.5 million. That goes to teacher pay, teacher compensation, class size reduction. That's the amount where we talked about funding a certain level of, of teachers to ensure that we maintain manageable class sizes. Reading and math, music, art and athletics, so those are the intervention supports, as well as the teachers in those, in those special areas. And then the, we said return to full-day kindergarten because that's just to ensure that you're able to maintain that, that program above and beyond what the state provides. The school counselors are not outlined in the override amount. That's already, they're included within the amount that we have as a district from the state. So the baseline budget. So this is really above and beyond supports from that. So what is the average class size? I don't know if, Craig, you're probably a little bit better.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll speak to this as, when you think about it, when the, the younger the age gets, the more you try to keep the class sizes smaller. So if you start talking about, you know, K through 2, you're talking about class sizes you're trying to keep under, you know, 25. And I know that we do monitor that pretty closely. When you start to get into, obviously, I say third, third, fourth, fifth grade, you start to see that number go up to about 27, 28. And then obviously, when you get into the middle school and high school element, you start to see class sizes that hit 30. What I will tell you is, is that when you start to look at that, and, and there's, I know there's some educators in the room, so they're going to like shake their head at me. What happens is, and I've lived it for a long time, is, is that you'll see class sizes and they, they will be in the mid-30s, especially at the high school level. And that's not, that's not unusual. And it becomes just an element of those, those staff members are skilled at doing it, but that's just the reality of, of sometimes what you have. And sometimes you have specialty classes, too. And we know that whether it might be a P class or an art, you know, a band class, and art's not a good example, but band or something, where you might see classes that are closer to 40, just because the nature of what they're doing. Or specialty classes, I say it on the other side of it, you might see that might, that you might see closer to 20, 25, if it's, it's dealing with, you know, high-tech equipment or things that require a lot of supervision. So it just depends on those elements. But, so I hope that answers the question, but that's typically. And we try to staff that way, but obviously, that element, that number will swing. And you'll see, sometimes you'll see that number go higher. And if we recognize, too, we have to monitor that and make adjustments based on those staffing projections. We'll make adjustments to where we put teachers based on whatever those numbers are to ensure proper supervision.
Now, we can shout out to 32 people in class, we do all the full hiring.
That, that is, that's a very accurate answer, yes. Thank, I wanted to repeat that. So, and I'm, I'm having a hard time seeing your name back there, I apologize. Randall? Thank you. And saying that, you know, in order to hire another teacher, you have to surpass that number of 32. And what that means is, is that until you start to see that number swell past that, then the, you begin to entertain that. We even know then, you know, that that, that takes time when you talk about hiring additional staff members to do that. So, but understanding class size pieces, and that's, that's a good thing for the committee to know. And you're able to talk about that more, ask more questions on that all the time, of how, how do we handle class sizes? Great question.
So what I wanted to do is, just similar to last time, just take a few minutes in reviewing what the, and I'll put it back to the areas of support, so you can discuss as a group. And then just identify, are those still key areas? Are those still the areas that the focus would be on, the priority would be on? Or is there a shift in something else that is becoming more of a, a priority area? Those are typically the more common areas you see school districts support. Because again, like free full-day kindergarten, well, the state's only going to provide half-day. So typically, you see that that's an ongoing one supported through the override. And so we'll take, let's see, it's 6:48. We'll take the next about five to 10 minutes, I'll kind of play by ear, see kind of how far along the group is. And then come together, and similar as last time, we'll just kind of share out and see, are there any new ideas, new areas for us to explore as a district? So I'll put it back to this area here, and that way you can kind of help guide your conversations. Yes, and we're going to pass out these chart papers, so you can start working together as a group. Yes, and we're going to pass out these chart papers so you can start working together as a group. Yes, and we're going to pass out these chart papers so you can start working together as a group. Let's come back together because I know we have a few other agenda items, Let's come back together because I know we have a few other agenda items, so I want to make sure we have sufficient time. So if you're all done with your notes, if you can put them up here similar as last time, and we'll just have a representative from your group come and share just some of the notes you decided on. Oh. All right. Perfect. Sorry. Okay, well, thank you so much. Appreciate that brainstorming session just kind of coming up with just what supports just out there as far as what you see as a potential priority or just areas to consider. So who on this one would mind, wouldn't mind kind of sharing? Yes, please.
Hello, I'm Joanne. So we pretty much agreed with what was there. We did have some questions. So the teacher's pay was what we felt would be priority. And then followed by full-day kinder. And we had questions regarding nurses and mental health support and SROs, but that was already answered. So we're aware that that's already part of the budget. And then the extra programming for interventions, the math, reading, arts and athletics. And then, of course, maintaining the class sizes for teaching.
Thank you for that. And I did want to clarify, that was a question, I know I was over there when you were talking about that. The nurses and any type of mental health support, there's, those two particular items would be anything that's funded within the district's budget, okay? The SROs is actually funded through a grant. So that's a state grant. SROs and officers are funded through state grants. So I just want to make sure, and we talked about that over there. So I'm glad you guys brought that question forward. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. We, same thing over here with more teachers, more pay. We just put, we were doing our brainstorming, so more teachers. But do we have the space? I know that was probably the bond. But does any of the schools have more space? Is there a program that's possibly a part of that that they can implement? Librarians, we miss them. It's part of development, possibly programs with that. And then sports equipment. You have sports, but not all students are privy to financial support for that. So sports equipment facilities, is there a program? And then before and after-school programs. A lot of schools don't have that anymore, possibly, you know, pandemic or things like that. But just the funding, hopefully, we can get that in. You're welcome. I just wondered, who wrote this? Thank you, cursive, thank you. I just, thank you. Me and my son are doing challenges now. He's like, ah, that's wrong.
And so we wrote down to retain social workers and counselors in schools. And then the one that should have been on the top is teacher salaries because we want to attract and retain highly qualified educators. Maintain full-day kinder is important. Adding additional instructional coaches so our amazing teachers are supported. And support and specialists for both special education and gifted education. Very important.
I'm going again. All right. All right, our group talked about, and I was on crutches last week, but I have graduated to a boot, so. No, I wished it was surgery, but we're okay. Healing every day though. So but we talked about in our group the, how critical it is to maintain things that are currently in place. Because if we lose these things, it will be devastating to our schools, our students and our staff. Keeping those class sizes lower by maintaining staff members, continuing full-day kindergarten. Should we go to half-day kindergarten? We will lose half of our kinder teachers. Half of them will be without a position. And then those special area classes, which are your PE, music, art band and your I explore slash library, as well as competitive teacher salaries. We're competing with those other school districts because we want to attract more staff here in Surprise. And then maintaining classroom supplies so that our teachers aren't having to go out of pocket for those.
Thank you very much. And we really appreciate you guys taking the time to, I mean, in looking at it, it looks like there's a lot of the similar concept I'm seeing full-day K and about, you know, half of them here. Oh, three of the four. And so more teacher, teacher pay. Obviously, we see the importance of it and prioritizing it. Yes, question? So the comment is just as far as some of the areas, schools around our areas, surrounding areas, just exploring a four-day school week option. Does that then impact our current teachers potentially exploring that instead? So there is, yeah, there's a few areas that are starting to consider that. Okay, so a comment just made as far as other sites might have a dedicated plan versus teachers currently here have to utilize before and after-school time in order to accomplish the same. So great comment. But no, this is great. So we'll, again, similar as last time, we'll take the information back. And this helps us in formulating just the committee's identified high needs of priorities. So with that, yes. Sorry. So from my, and what I've seen, and you know, do these target the main areas? And I would say yes, as far as, because some of the areas, so something to consider, and I think I mentioned one of the tables, we're limited to a certain percentage of what we can max, you know, max the override to. And so we are already at the max of a 15% revenue control limit, which is what we currently have. So it's about $24.5 million. This fiscal year, it was 23.8 or 9 last. And so when we talk about what are the areas of priority, that is a very finite amount of money. You know, if we say we're going to introduce something new, well, that means one of those is coming out. And so it's not adding more, and now we want this in addition to. We would then have to start considering, well, what of those are we going to either remove or start paring down? And so as a district, those have been high areas of additional support for our programs. I think they've been well-integrated into the daily, you know, school, the school program. And so I think you guys have identified the main key areas. Obviously, teacher pay is a huge piece of it that we're able to continue to supplement and put towards that. Having the full-day kindergarten, I mean, we did see the impact that had in 2016, 2015, when we had to start cutting that down. It's about half, you know, as Chantel mentioned, that's half of our teacher kindergarten workforce. Right now, it would be about, you know, 33, 34 teachers, half-day kindergarten if we went down to that. And so the extra math and supports, I know we're really focusing on continuing those intervention programs and supports. And so to be able to say, would some of those pieces come out? I think you guys have done a great job of realizing that those are critical areas. And so I think you've done a great job of identifying what those are. And I think we see that maintain the same level of service. We see that a lot of districts, these are, you'll see them when you see overrides. These are the ones that continuously come up. Because if you were to take out $24 million out of the budget, you now increase sizes. You remove your full-day K, you remove your specials programs, you remove a lot of those interventions. And so it is a lot of these additional above and beyond that support that are supported through overrides. And so that's why I think you've done a great job of identifying those. All right, well, thank you. So we will move next to Mr. Shipman. Kevin Shipman is our planning administrator here at this school district. And so he's done amazing, he's very integral in being able to discuss enrollment forecasting, kind of where we're at, where we're projected to go. And so we definitely are excited that he's here to share his expertise with us. So with that, I'll pass it on to him.
Thank you, Mary Dell. Again, my name's Kevin Shipman. My title's planning administrator. And I want to kind of help paint a picture for the committee as far as what's the district look like in the last couple of decades? Where are we now? What is the future looking like? And then ultimately, to help answer some questions as the committee decides, are there needs, are there capital needs basically for new schools and/or land? And what does that look like? Where's the need? Where might it exist? How the committee might want to look at that? So just taking a look at enrollment, so DICE Art is very unique. What happened, you know, in the last 20, you know, 2000 to 2020 in terms of enrollment? So we're down below 5,000, and it was just basically explosive growth. And you can see over the last 10 years or so, it's kind of flattened out and gone up and down as some things have occurred. And we can get into that. And we can get into that a little bit more as we move along. And then this is just showing that same enrollment growth and then construction, which is really construction between 2000 and 2010. So each green diamond there on top of a bar was a K8 that was constructed, and then the blue is a high school. So for what, like six years there, we're building three schools every year. It's just a really impressive amount of growth and response that the district had to have to, to really heavy residential construction. So this is that same, same illustration, just in a little bit better way, right? So she's just showing all that school construction. And I think this is a nice segue into a couple of weeks when we meet with maintenance of facilities and others, and they kind of share about those assets we have, the buildings and their, their mechanical parts, et cetera, how they function, and how long they've, you know, been on the ground. And it's all sort of, you know, they're all approaching 20 years old, and what does that look like? So, so where does that leave us? So now we have 20 K8 schools, and those, some of those are middle schools or K4s now, and the four high schools that we have. And this, this is actually a little bit older. This is kind of like a heat map of where the enrollment exists in the district. It hasn't been updated for a little while, so there's, there's more activity up north. But you can kind of see, obviously, it's in the central part of the district for the most part. And we'll look here in a few slides later, where all that development activity is occurring is, is on the periphery, right? Where the new homes are occurring. And I wanted to talk about this. This is, this is just an illustration, so it's not meant to pull numbers off of, but to kind of discuss and explain. And I should, I should preface this. If you have any questions at any time, jump in, and we'll just have a conversation. I want to make sure that the committee has what they need for me, and if that means I need to bring something else back to you, or answer questions, or show you more data later, by all means, let me do that for you. So, so this is kind of illustrating, yes, Bill? That's a good question, and I want to provide you exact answers. Off the top of my head, I want to say, because we have, you know, 23,000-ish students, it's been 25, depends. It's hard to know for sure exactly, because you don't always know, a student could be enrolled elsewhere. We don't have access to that data. I think our cap, yes. So the question that Bill had was basically, if you look at the district boundaries, we know that we have X number of DICE Art students in those boundaries. How many students are in those boundaries? Because there are K, you know, there are K to 12 students in DICE Art's boundaries that don't attend DICE Art schools. And they could attend charters, they could attend online schools, they could attend private schools, they could attend homeschool, right? So there's a lot of other options there. And, you know, it's really best that I come back with that number, because I know, well, we, we just pulled it from the last meeting, I just don't remember what our capture rate is. Okay. Yeah, Chantel's going to look it up. Yeah, it's in the boundary committee. We had that same conversation, so. And when we forecast out, we do basically forecast that a slightly smaller percentage of the future population will attend DICE Art as kind of charters and other options grow. And we'll get into that a little bit more. So circling back to this slide, so something I hear sometimes is, you know, the school should be full, we should fully utilize our capital assets. And a lot of our schools, plus or minus 50, have a design capacity of 1,100 students, right? So is, is 600 students a problem at a school? Is 800 students a problem at a school? And so in my world, what I look at all the time is this sort of reality, is that, let's say we have a community like Marley Park that, well, that's not the best example, let's say Countryside, where there's all this new, new homes being built 20 years ago. And that grows, all the new families move into those new construction, new constructed homes, and they have a lot of young kids, statistically speaking, compared to other neighborhoods. And then that will peak. And what that has done in most of the schools that DICE Art unified is, they were at or over capacity at that period, a few years after they were built, or five or eight years after they were built. And then what you have happen is the aging out in the community. So the students get older, and then they, they, you have, you have fewer students in that community. And so when we say, well, that school's not full, or, or, you know, where are we on capacity district-wide? That's kind of basically the reason why we have some room in some of our schools. It would be very difficult, it's impossible, I'll tell you, to just have every school built to hold 1,100 students, and then you're always going to have plus or minus, you know, a couple dozen 1,100 students. It just doesn't really work like that. So, and then kind of what happens is that they age out is, you can kind of see what happens with the neighborhood. So sometimes you get additional development, or like Marley Park is actually an interesting example, where you get a lot of families attracted to continue to go there. So you have a lot of enrollment there, and it's kind of maintains a population. But in some neighborhoods, you get people choosing to age in place, right? So they're 55, or 60, or 65, and they want to stay in their home, which is great. And so you don't get new student enrollment from that. And then what happens, you know, decades down the road, that's really kind of depends on that neighborhood and that community. But that's kind of the reason why we have differing enrollment at different, different schools. And I'm going to back up here for a minute. So the central part of the district, the most of it, you know, our schools are going to have between like 600 and 900 students for the most part, the K8. And, and so there's some capacity there. And we'll kind of lead into that in a moment here. So, so in Arizona, in order to be funded by the state to have new school construction for K8, we have to be at capacity district-wide. So I think, and now I'm drawing a blank, that number is something like, I'm going to do some math in my head, 23,000. We have capacity, according to the state, based on the school square footage, for 23,000 K8 students. We don't have that many students right now. So until we get full capacity everywhere, basically, the state doesn't fund us. And so that's why a bond conversation, I think, is relevant, as we discuss, you know, where's growth occurring? Where might we consider new school construction, right? Because to put it more simply, the state is not going to fund DICE Art for a K8 school anytime, nowhere near anytime soon. So, and then on the high school side, as I'm discussing this, and I was thinking about it a minute ago, I realize probably a mission is not to have a slide here on what the enrollment is by the school, so you can kind of paint a picture. Because we have some schools with low, lower, or I should say, you know, smaller enrollments, like I said, maybe 600 or something. And we have schools with pretty healthy numbers, like 900. And then we have some schools that are really full, over 1,000, right? So for the high school side, for the committee, you know, the question on K8, we'll get to in a moment, right? But for high school, it looks like the state might fund us for high school in the next 10 years. That's kind of the way things are going. If you would have asked us three or four years ago, before COVID and everything, we would have said, we absolutely think that's going to happen. After COVID, and then you had a lot of things like homeschool, and moved to online, where students didn't necessarily return. And then what happened last year with the voucher expansion in the state of Arizona? So we saw fewer students than we were expecting. It's kind of a question mark as what that's going to look like. It's a little bit cloudy, but I think in the next year or two, we'll have a much better idea. Well, so my understanding from the state perspective is they give you everything you need to build a school, but that's, you might characterize that as just the very, very bare minimum. So I think for all the schools that we've built, we did use bond money, we used adjacent ways assessments to help pay for the access into and out of the school. And then, and Mary Dell would know, yeah.
Yeah. No, so when we were going through the hypergrowth, we did, as a district, receive, there was, at the time, it was the new school facilities funding that was coming in through the school facilities board. There was some that was funded then through the bonds. So it does start getting complex when, if you purchased, if you funded them through bonds, then, then it starts considering what's excludable space. And so maybe the SFB won't fund a portion that was funded through bonds. And so it gets pretty complex, but, and also, it depends on the funding that they receive as well as an agency. And so that's what's always kind of something to consider. But as, as Kevin mentioned, they look at it for capacity across your entire district, not necessarily sometimes where you need that development to, that construction to occur.
Does the capacity stay the same or change? It stays the same. If we add or remove facilities or add portables, then we have additional square footage, and that number would change. But I don't think our high school capacity numbers have changed in any way whatsoever since, since the last construction in 2010. So it would, it stays the same. And we've looked at how we utilize our schools as well, because there's kind of the reality that if you have a classroom and it has, you know, 850 square feet, then the state says, well, that will serve, let's say, 32 students or whatever. However, you might use that classroom for students with special needs that can only fit, you know, three teachers and eight to 10 students. And that's not calculated for in that capacity for, for square footage. So we've kind of looked at these numbers in the past before and said, what are we really using? That doesn't help us in terms of funding, but it kind of paints a better picture of what we're really using in terms of that, that space that we have. So, and then I have an asterisk on this capacity for high school as well, because like Mary Dell mentioned, excluded, excluded space. So we won't dive into detail on it at this point. Square footage that we have, based on the way it was funded, might not be counted for that capacity. And then DICE Art High School is pretty close to Luke Air Force Base, and we kind of have an agreement with the Air Force, because they would like to see fewer students in their flight path, right? And so we kind of have an agreement in place to limit how many students we have there. So what that looks like when we actually tell the state, hey, we're going to trigger this, and, and we would need the funding, is a little bit uncertain at this time, because they might say, well, you have more capacity there. And we say, yes, but we've worked with the Air Force to limit that, and so, you know, fund us up to this point. And then I know that, and I can't remember if the committee has looked at things, but, you know, we look at comparable districts. And one thing we see is our transportation costs, which tend to look a little bit higher when we compare with other districts. And so I just kind of want to paint a picture a little bit of our district. So we're kind of spread out, and we have these large areas where you can't have any residential development. So I think it started maybe in the late 90s or early 2000s, but there was this effort by the Air Force and military to make sure that we didn't have development that would encroach onto airfields. So you don't really have any new residential in that, those red lines, which is the Luke Air Force, basically, overflight area. Then we have a large part of the district that is age restricted. And then we have some other areas, like behind the McMickin Dam, where there's no students. And so if you look at like Luke Elementary or Assante, our buses have to go a long way, and so do our other staff who are, who are visiting those sites. And so it's just kind of a hurdle we have to deal with, and as part of our cost doing business, is that we have these big areas where we can't efficiently, because, you know, obviously, the most efficient way is put all the students right next to school, and it's really easy to get them in and out. So we're kind of limited there. And also, you know, I didn't highlight it on here, but along the 303, kind of in that Prusada area, there's a bunch of undeveloped land, or like, you know, you have the auto dealerships. And so because of those areas, there's also kind of a gap in where their students are currently, or that's starting to fill in a little bit more, so. So we'll look at forecasts, and this is a K enrollment forecast. One thing we know is like, we're never going to get it right, especially when you start to go a few years out. It's just difficult to know exactly what the future will look like. So, you know, we'll look at some ranges. And we can drill down into these numbers later if we need to. But I would say that as we forecasted in the last, you know, two, three, four, or five years, they're pretty conservative. If you looked at the development activity that's going on in the southwest and the northwest or north part of the district, we used to see that kind of construction, and we'd say, we'd, we'd be here saying, well, the data tells us we need four new schools. That's what we would have done in 2007, right? You saw what was going on, on the previous chart. And, you know, post-COVID, and with additional, you know, providers coming in, like a private school charter, et cetera, we're pretty, pretty conservative and, and careful when we say, what do we need, right? Because we don't want to build 10 new schools, and they're all empty. And then for high school, this is kind of a range of high schools' numbers. The state number that would trigger is, is about 10,200. So it's kind of looking like we'll hit that number to potentially, or be qualified, I guess, for funding for a new high school. And then let's walk through a little exercise here, just kind of illustrating some of the challenges with our geography. So this is a little bit older, but this is showing kind of a heat map of where our student population is. And then we tone that down, and we look at the distance to the school. And you can see that most of the students are pretty close to school, which is kind of what we're trying to do. And then this is development activity or plan new homes. And you can see where that's happening. It's no real surprise to anyone here, right? It's in the southwest for the most part, and the north part of the district. So then, as we move along, and we also kind of looked at timing a little bit, which, you know, we've got updated information on, but, you know, there's a lot of activity going And again, so you can see those distances, and then this is basically what happens when we take those, those schools that are in those growth areas out of the equation. So circling back to why we're here, you know, for the committee's sake, do, do we need a high school? Well, it certainly looks like we're going to need a high school, and it would be very logical to put one up north at some point in the future. We're having conversations about where we could potentially find land, because we don't have, you know, that much land in the district. But there's a bit of a question mark of, you know, is that something that would be qualified for state funding? And are we certain that that's something we are ready to move forward with at this point in time, right? We do, we do have capacity at our high schools now. But as far as the K8, the state's not going to fund us. And so when you eliminate those schools because they're full, then what that creates is a situation where the students are three, or four, or five, or six, or seven miles from a school, and in, in some cases, further, that has room for them. And so what that requires us to then do is, you know, take a student who lives down by shadow, and maybe bus them to Rancho Gabriela, or Countryside, or Ashton, or somewhere that has room. And then we have to kind of split up those neighborhoods, because that school fills up, and we got to go to the next school. And so it becomes this shuffle with boundaries and a challenge, and we're kind of breaking up a lot of neighborhoods. We have long bus rides. And then the other challenge, and Transportation can, can elaborate on this, is we get to the point where we can't even fill up our buses. And this is kind of happening in Assante and at Willow Canyon's routes up north, because there's just not enough time to make two more stops, or three more stops to fill the bus, so that we can get them to school in time, right? Which is a challenge. So, so this is sort of the, the reasoning behind, you know, considering school construction on these peripheral areas. And then as far as land is concerned, so we currently have, we own seven K8 sites, two up north, and five kind of in the southwest. We're closing on one next week in Rancho Mercado, which is in the kind of northeast corner there. Please. Yeah, and let me, I'll zoom in. Yeah. So this is up north. So we own two in Copper Canyon North, used to be Austin Ranch. And we're closing on that yellow one in Rancho Mercado next week. Yeah. No, these are all elementary sites. Yeah, yeah. Okay. I see, Bill. And then we have. next week. Yeah. No, these are all elementary sites. Yeah. Yeah. Okay. And then we have, Lennar has a site that we'll probably be taking possession of in the next like nine months, another site in Asante. So we've got real estate up there and we have real estate in the southwest. White Tanks and Granite Vista, those are right in the middle of a large development. And the Zanero Trails ones, there's nothing really around them at this time because those phases haven't built yet. And then Sarah Ann Ranch is a, is an older site that we have. And it's, it's in a developed area along 175th and there's a lot of charters there as well. So. Yeah, I think so. It's the district boundary. Yes. Yes. Nataburg and the unincorporated area. And then on this, the Loop 303 side is Pure Unified. Yeah. So district boundaries. Yes. So, and so we hear 15 acres a lot for a K8 site. We tend, you know, traditionally built K8s because it gives us flexibility as opposed to kind of saying, well, it has to be a K6 or a, you know, middle school, which you might look at, that's a little bit bigger. So we have sites. And did I miss a question? Bill, did you? Yes. No, it, it hasn't. So basically we go to the jurisdiction when a development is proposed and we say, this is going to be a burden on the district and we need this essential public facility supported. And so, you know, when they have that big of a development, they'll usually be able to give us 15 acres. So no, we haven't purchased anything in ages Yeah, there's big ones. We've looked at those and we've talked to developers in Asante about a possible site. And we're also talking with the city surprise and the county about a possible site. So I think we're optimistic that we might be able to find something here in the next six months or a year. But it's a question mark right now. So. The state land would have to be, the trust line would have to be purchased at a fair market value, right? There's, there's some other things that we're looking into that we might be able to, you know, find something else on. So. For the most part, some of these are not, yeah, they're, so this is a lot of different phases. So some of these are just concepts or like in a plan that's been approved, but they're not platted or they're not final plated. So like, some of this is the old Prusada stuff. And then some of the high, upper phases of Asante, that's just what's in the plan. But yes, it's a. Yeah, absolutely. So the, the question or comment was just basically hearing that the city has 12,000 homes currently approved and the committee would find it useful to know what that looks like, what the city's projections are over the next few years to kind of paint a picture of what development activity will occur. And we have that information. We can provide that for you and paint a picture. So, and I know we're getting up against the clock a little bit, so I'm going to try to move along here. So, so circling back. So high school, question mark, land, you know, we may, we may be funded by the state. Land, we have some irons in the fire, so to speak, on high school land. In the southwest part of the district, we don't have any schools that are over capacity or at capacity. So we don't have a need that's tangible right now necessarily speaking, right? We don't have schools, you know, like Mountain View where we're at the seams, we're bursting, we have to address it. The thing about the southwest part of the district is there's a little wiggle room there because you can send them to kind of some closer schools. If you look at a lot of our schools, they have about a square mile of an attendance area boundary. Marley Park's a square mile. Asante Prep is 22 square miles. So that's kind of where the biggest need is. There's almost 1,100 students there and design capacity is 1,100. So we're, we're having conversation right now about what to do about that situation. This is what that area looked like in 2004. This is what it looks like now. And this is old and it needs to be updated as well, right? So there was a boundary committee for Asante to address the, the issue because we're pretty certain we wouldn't be able to open the school next year just because of all the growth. We looked at our numbers and kind of did a range of a forecast, looked at a lot of alternatives. And the, the committee has made a recommendation to the board. And if the board acts, acts on it, then what we have done is bought ourselves three, four, maybe five years up at Asante. But that really doesn't address our problems long-term because if the board chooses to, to pass that boundary change, then we know that we're, we're going to have a conversation again about overcrowding in, you know, two, three, four years, maybe five if we're lucky, right? So this is just kind of details of what that looks like. So circling back to costs, and I know the finance department can share on this more, but this is kind of what those costs look like, far and above anything else in terms of just a capital need for capacity for schools and where the growth is occurring, far and away is, is a school up north. I can bring more back and kind of share on that, but that is where the absolute most pressing need is because we're having capacity issues today at Asante. And the boundary changes that we've proposed to the board, should the board choose to approve them, will only buy us a couple of years. Those are what costs look like. I'm happy to answer other questions or just have, you know, any prompts for other data or information you'd like to see.
Kevin, I just wanted, if we can circle back, I know the question originally was on the enrollment of surrounding charters that were considered. As far as where the students are, how many students are generally in our boundaries?
Total population.
Total population and then?
Oh, yeah. Okay. So this is data from the state. So these are students who are enrolled that the state is aware of. And there's almost 34,000 school-aged children living in the boundaries and 22, 23,000 of those attending Dyser. So it sounds like about a third-ish are attending other schools. That's not to say that there aren't schools or students that are not on the state's radar. They could, they could be attending like a private organization that's not registered or something. But that pretty much covers everything. So, thank you. Yes. 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 So the question was, we had a lot of conversation about growth at Asante. What about Mountain View, that Shadow Ridge area, the southwest, as I would say? And this committee member said, was that the second most pressing area? And I think that along with answering the high school question, yes. Four years ago, we would have said, we need to address another school near Mountain View in terms of capacity. ALA, American Leadership Academy opened up down there. And there's additional capacity with some other charters there. So that along with a post-COVID kind of like homeschooling and online thing has bought us some time there. And the reality is, is that's a difficult area to forecast. Are we going to start to have capacity issues there in two years, in five years? I don't know. But yes, that is a, an area that we're monitoring. So the other thing about Mountain View is when Mountain View fills up, we're not extremely far from other schools like Sonoran or Rancho. So we have a little more ability there to absorb new growth and tweak boundaries to kind of fit them in. But that can only last for, for so long because of the amount of activity that's going on down there. So, thanks. No, there's no plans like that. The question was, the boundary change to address Asante Prep enrollment, which is before the board, and they'll make a final determination in a few weeks here. But there, that, so that, that plan basically takes six, seven and eight at Asante and sends them to Cimarron Springs with a couple of other adjustments. It makes Cimarron like a larger boundary middle school. But no, you know, merging with another district or even kind of collaborating with them to take, to share students, it's not really on the radar. I know there's maybe been some conversations in the past, but I think it's a very big legal and administrative hurdle because you have to get both governing boards and then I think maybe both voter bodies to approve that merging. So it's like way beyond once in a blue moon. The other thing is, is I know that they have so much growth and a lot of it is more suburban. It's thousands and thousands of units. So I'm not sure that's even something that they could consider in the next few years because they're really seeing some dense development in their district as well. So, so yeah, the boundary change is just to buy us basically three, four years. Yeah. So. Okay. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Kevin. I know that's a lot of information. So, and a lot of great charts. So we'll be sure we share those out with, out to the committee afterwards as well, so you can refer to them. But it's a lot of good information to be able to, to see. And then also it leads into this next conversation, which, you know, Kevin spoke to our boundaries and just the sheer distance that our buses do travel and from, you know, especially also like the bus barn or the bus yard being down at the most southeastern part of the district and then traveling up to Asante, going out to Shadow, just the sheer, the volume of miles that we cover. And so we did want to talk about the upcoming or just the overall transportation overview, the, the plan that would be in, in, in effect if we did have sufficient funds to be able to have a replacement plan for the buses, our fleet that is aging, which in and of itself creates additional costs because you have an aging fleet, you have additional expenses, et cetera. And so we just want to provide a brief recap and thank you to our transportation department in providing the information. Unfortunately, there was an emergency where our director of transportation couldn't be here. But if there's any further questions, I mean, we'd be certainly happy to, to look further into them for you. So the overall identified replacement needs, and I believe in the very first time we met, we talked about those buses that we really ideally would like to have, the buses that are 15 years, those that are 15 years or older, really start getting those replaced. And so those that we've identified are 46 regular education buses and then 32 special education buses. So in total, about 78 buses. So about 80 buses or so would be what we would identify would be the first need, that those buses are now currently 15 years or older. The oldest one we have right now listed in the replacement is 2003. So it's right at 20 years. So the, the plan, the replacement plan would be about 10 buses a year and then nine buses for the following four years. And I say this because ideally this would be great and you just replace them. We have, you know, when we've had some reserves and, and now we talked about our capital funding and you saw the years last time where we were really not receiving capital. Now that it's starting to get restored, we're trying to implement just a slight replacement plan. But at best, we might only buy one or two buses because they run, as you'll mention, see here in the next slide, a few hundred thousand dollars each. And so even then, we, because of the pandemic and the shortage of supply, we were getting about 18 to 24 month turnaround time on some of those buses. And so I think at the national level, there is still that supply shortage. And so we say this because ideally it'd be great to replace those within five years. But the reality is it would take some time in order to even recoup. And I'm sure we're not the only district in the entire nation that is out there looking for, for buses. And so we just wanted to kind of put that picture out there. So the cost for a regular education bus, so did a little bit of research on what the current bus is, the, the cost, about 247,000, so about $250,000 for one regular education bus. And again, we list on the bottom, it could, it could raise, you know, rise based on inflation. So this is again a projected, this is 20, $23. What it might look like in the future, we, we wouldn't necessarily know, but just an idea on, on that could go up slightly. So the first year again, we would be looking at replacing at least 10 of the identified need and then nine for the next four years for a total of the 46 that, that we spoke of. So I listed on there at the 247,000, that would be about 11.4 million related to the regular education buses. So again, that's just kind of getting us back to standards of getting us out of the 15 to 20-year age of the fleet that's currently on, on a regular education. Special education, slightly less, but still 176,000 is the estimated cost of a bus right now for special education. Same thing, replacing eight in the first year and then starting a cycle of six every year for the next four years for a total of 32 buses. And that would be a total approximate cost of 5.6 million. So in total, between the 11.4 and 5.6, we're looking at an estimated about $17 million. And like we mentioned on there, projected possible increase, you know, on price per year not included in there. And so we, we mentioned large dollar volume. When you think of like, oh my gosh, 17 million dollars and you see a, a district put that on the pamphlet and it's like 17 million, that's a lot for, for a district. When you break it down to how much each vehicle costs and then when you start looking at your fleet and the age of that fleet, and you start breaking it down, obviously that's how those figures add up quick. So the question is what happens when, with the old ones that we dispose of? So we do have to go through a proper, property disposal surplus process typically with the other buses that we've had replaced. It's a trade-in value. Yes. Yes. We get a very minimal trade-in. I want to say in the last, the last big one that we had, we received maybe about, about 5,000. Yeah. It's usually about 5,000 to 10,000 at best on the trade-in value. So it's a very, very minimal. It's a very depreciated bus at this point in time. So when you're replacing it, it's a bus that's been fully depreciated, that the cost of replacing the motor now, I mean, and we can look into the cost of the motor, how much those are. I mean, when we replace the engines and the transmissions, really the cost now outweighs the benefit of keeping it. And so, yeah, the trade-in value that we're being offered is a very low trade-in value. And I think about that in terms of vehicle. If I was to trade in my 20-year-old car, they're not going to give me much for that. Closer to 200,000. Yes. It's a, because these are very depreciable. I mean, they're usually, you know, taken for scraps or you've, yeah, it's a very, very small trade-in value that we get. So I know the question too was about the impacting factors. And I'll speak, have Craig speak a little bit to this because we talked about it. And I think when you think about the context of what Kevin Shipman was able to just provide, when we talk about why are, why are the costs, I know that question came up last time. Why, why is our cost per rider so high compared to other districts? So I'll just have you kind of elaborate a little bit on that.
Yes, go ahead, sir. We, we utilize one bus yard currently. And the question was, how many bus yards? We have one. And it's on Litch, it's on Litchfield, south of Cactus, between Peoria and Cactus. And those buses will travel to Asante. Now, it's a great, it's a great point. I think that brings us to this slide here. Want to point out, I, I think that's a great question of asking trade-in value on buses because those are, those are the kind of things that, you know, when you, when you think about all those elements and, and that number may change and we can, we can obviously investigate that, but there's probably factors behind that as to understand why. We are going to have a chance, like we talked about previously, that we're going to have an opportunity in January. We do have a Saturday reserve. We want to show you guys our buses. We've got a, we've got a fleet. When we say, when you start talking about buses that are 15 to 20 years old, you do get to see the difference inside that bus versus I show you. And you will see a, a sharp difference. There's no difference than if I take you and I show you a car that's almost 20 years old and I show you the difference between that car and the car that's within 10 years or less. You're going to see the differences in it. And, and obviously the importance is, we get into other conversations with it as even when we start talking about safety on a bus. The elements of safety have improved and things like that. And so I think it's that part to understand. But, and the production of buses too, and we heard that part. and, and the production of buses too, and we heard that part as well. We can, we can pursue the bus, the bus element and we talk about that amount of money and everything else. It is a, it is a nonstop catch up trying to do this. You are constantly chasing, trying to keep up because of that, that part. But there are good things that we can do as a district. We look at the impacts of costs, those factors that are up there. So we see things like, okay, we can't control fuel costs. I mean, that did cause an increase in transportation. I think everybody recognized that that was out of our control. When you talk about the spread of the district, I think that that element of that conversation, the district, you know, you know, could be considering in the long run, you'd say if you were in fact building up into Asante, do you consider in that element having a, a smaller yard where you have an element of buses in that region? And I'm not, I'm not the expert person in the room to tell you that portion of it, but I know that you could, you could probably have some people that could identify how to hit those routes better when you start to spread out like that to cut costs. And I think that's, that's a really important part of that recommendation. Yeah, you, you know, we need, we need to look at buses, but we also in the long run have to consider how do we make those routes shorter? Another part is salary rates to it. Do you remember back a few years? I was watching it happen and the, the struggle to find bus drivers. Okay? That part of it, and then that's why you see three routes happen in Dizart too. I mean, if we had, if we had plenty of drivers and another 20 buses or something, 30 buses, you would be able to run, you would be able to run your routes a little bit differently. But that's the staggered times. We have 7:15 starts, 8:15s, 9 o'clock, right? So when we had to, when we had to work to get more bus drivers, that raised that cost as well. That was another factor. And then we mentioned the increased miles and I didn't, you know, when we started to talk about it, we, you know, being very transparent, the middle school piece was brought up in here. We don't have a figure to put in front of you. I don't know the exact amounts, but it was definitely something that Mr. Shipman had pointed out to us. He said it did cause an increase of cost just because of that piece. So that could be part of, you know, something that, you know, this committee could say in the end of like, hey, as we evaluate transportation, that's an important piece to look at. We are recognizing that as well, right along with that point that was made. Okay? And just to be very clear on that one is, is that the, the aspect of our buses traveling further is obviously gonna raise your cost. Okay? And so that could be a piece that's obviously analyzed and looked at moving forward. You know, and that's something we could take forward as a district to discuss. And then the, the one that shows on there, increased maintenance costs. Anytime you talk about older buses, you're gonna have more maintenance costs. Anything that's older is gonna take more maintenance. When you get a chance to see, you saw a slide earlier, the, the buildings 2003 through, and you saw four, five years, 2004, five, six, seven, eight, nine, all those buildings that are aging up, you could imagine what's happening to the HVAC. We call them chillers. And what's happening to that, what's happening to roofs? Think about your own home, weatherization, all the elements you do with those kind of things. That starts to deteriorate in maintaining. So those are costs that continue to build. This particular cost shows you that transportation element and that's why we wanted to make sure that you had that information.
Craig, can I just add a thought to that too? Because the other part is we talk about capital expenses and your general operations, maintenance and override are very different, right? Well, they're also very reliant on each other because if you don't have a well, a well-equipped vehicle, you know, you're going to now be incurring your maintenance costs out of your MNO to help offset this. So if you don't have enough capital dollars, you're now fixing it and buying just supplies and the parts and the labor and repairing and services out of your MNO, which is to help support just your general operations. And so now you start pulling from your MNO pot of money, which is usually what helps provide salaries and benefits and programs to help offset because you have this need over here that's not being met because of the lack of capital. So it, it's, it's kind of this, you know, a pendulum that you see swinging back and forth.
Yes, ma'am.
My question is, how many staff is in transportation? And do you guys, it's okay if you don't have, just wondering, is this contracted? Hi. Is this contracted out maintenance? Like your technicians? Is, is how Dizart has their own technician?
The, the question that was asked was our staffing for maintaining and who and how those buses are maintained correctly. So like our, our garage service and how we do that. And we do have our own mechanics that work on that, that are done at the bus yard. Okay, and the number of them is, there's three or four, I know that are for sure. You have seven? Okay, there's our answer. Seven, they're saying seven total. And, go ahead. Buses that are questioned, buses in the fleet and there's 100 and 153. We do not.
Yes, ma'am.
Sure, the, the question is related to what would be the long-term impact if, if you don't, you know, you don't have bussing and transportation due to, let's just say that as we age out, we don't have the funding and, and, you know, you're, you're relegated to less buses being able to be used to take care of the size of the district. I'm not gonna try to act like I'm the expert of that element, but I can tell you that once you start looking at that of, of the burden that it plays on that piece, the district does have to look at alternatives. Sometimes what they do is they cut bus routes. So it's gonna require parents to come up with other solutions to get their kids to school. Okay? So you've gotta, you've gotta weigh that into, into the measure. You're also going to, you know, we talk about it, what's those alternatives? You probably will see because of that, think about the impacts that happen once you say there's less routes, less options to get to school. How does that impact student attendance and other things like that? So you could start to play the game of how does it really impact just the overall aspects of a, of a district and how they work to get kids to school? And could that affect attendance and other things? But there, and I don't have all the answers to that, but that's definitely, we, we've seen districts that have struggled with transportation and parents have had to look for other options and they were, became responsible for getting the kid to school. But that's just, I'm speaking off of districts that have had issues in that way. I don't know what the other options maybe that the district could do. They could shift money. If we said we didn't have funding, and I think that's a great point, is we could shift money from other areas and say, because we believe that's an important thing and that's what the community is saying. You know, there's a demand for make sure we have still keep the bussing, then you gotta find a way to do that. I'm gonna ask, yeah, we're gonna wait to get that answer. The question is, is total transportation budget as it is now? So we're gonna get, look that up and find that for you. There is, there is a formula to it. And, and we could show you the, the map formula to it, but that's how the bus routes are designed, is based on the distance from the school. So you might start to look at it and say, hey, you know, for some, you know, for some, it's, if it's less than a mile, then we're saying find your way there. But then if it's further than that, and I don't have the exact formula in front of me, but the question, if I didn't make it clear to answer that is, what, where do you decide that transportation is provided? And I could get that answer. I don't know if we have, I know it varies a little bit, but. All right, I'm gonna have, I'm gonna have Kevin repeat that.
Thanks. The walk boundary is one mile for K8 or K4. So if you're within one mile, radial mile, then you do not, or you're not provided a bus. It's 1.25 miles for middle schools and 1.5 for high schools. And then there's exceptions based on safety as the, as the leadership determines, so.
And then just to follow up to the budgeted amounts, I think the, the most realistic is to look at what our FY '23 actual was, based our annual financial report. So in pupil transportation and MNO, so our general operational, we spent $11 million in transportation services. And for capital items, we spent $895,000. $895,000 for student transportation services for capital, meaning we did not purchase a bus last year. And so that's just really, that might be some transmissions, that might be a motor or just other capital items. Maybe there, if there was a bus, it would be one. I'm sorry, what was the question?
The question is, is that $11 million is used for transportation, not actually the education of the classroom?
Right, so when you look at our actual percentage, I mean, we spent last year in '23, $181 million in our maintenance and operation and 11 million of it was related to transportation services.
Yeah, and that's where we, you saw the, you saw the pie chart we, that was shared recently about how much money goes into the classroom versus when you talk about non-classroom expenditure and that element, I think is always important for us to see how much is actually in the classroom versus that part of it. And that, and we understand how they connect in the end, but it's a great point. All right, yes. Our. Our fuel provider, right. We don't roll the buses into the circle K, that's true.
Yeah, we have contracts with various petroleum, yes.
We do, we do have, we do have, yes, a, we have our gas pumps and everything else. I don't know if we have an answer to that. How, where are we getting our gas provided for is the question. Where does it come from?
As far, as far as like what the vendor is or, oh. Yeah, they're usually, they're state contracts that we have contracted to, to get certain pricing. And we piggyback off those cooperatives that are issued out through the state. And so they, they negotiate a state pricing dollar that we, that we get. And so ultimately then the bulk fuel comes in and then that's how we replenish it. So no, individual buses then don't go to the fuel stations. It's all done through the transportation area. Typically charter schools do not provide transportation services.
And I'm gonna go back to the first question. The question was, is that do charter schools provide? Bussing, yes. And, and you're, you're correct that, yeah, there's, you don't, it's, it's very rare to see that happen. So if your point is, is that, yeah, looking at that part of the, the element of the budget, I think then, you know, that would be something that could, could be discussed. The other part of the question is, is that when you're taking drivers or getting kids to events after school, that piece, a lot of times, and I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna defer again, but a lot of times when we have, we do have bus drivers that'll take on those, on those extra, you know, the extra time. Sometimes our coaches will use the smaller buses, but we do have bus drivers that'll take on those routes to earn that money. And then also if you're talking about a charter bus, that's a totally different element where we're actually hiring and contracting with a vendor to do that piece. But is there anything else to add to that? So what was said is we use our own bus, our bus drivers to take care of the transportation. I also want to go back to that other point when we're talking about that other element. Just keep in mind that we do have special populations like special education and other groups that do require a bussing transportation piece that, again, that's not funded. So, you know, we have to consider some of those pieces and how, and, and then whether or not, you know, obviously bussing does provide a support. And I'm just, I'm not trying to counter, I'm just pointing out that there is, there are parents who depend on it too, but doesn't mean that we understand the, I understand the point of what you were making, so. And we appreciate that. All right. The element of, and as we, we hit on two categories today. We hit, we hit both there. I'm gonna bring this to our next item, but we hit those two big items of really looking at growth and what it, what the cost is related to growth. And if you're looking at another school related to that, land, school, what that costs and that piece of it and where, you know, how land plays into that. And we also looked at, you know, some of the elements of transportation. At the next two meetings, we're gonna be studying a little bit more about what's involved with renovations and those renovations when we talk about the elements of the aging buildings. Okay? And what's going on there. And then we're also going to be addressing and talking about safety and school safety and the items that you guys identified as well in your last meeting. The one request you guys did have, as I go to item five, is you had mentioned you'd like to go and speak with your, the principal at the school in your community. And obviously you guys are, you know, you're, you're very well capable of contacting. We've, we let our principals know that you could be reaching out and we think it's important that that opportunity takes place. Some of you asked, do you have any suggested questions that we can use? We identified some very basic generic questions. Okay? But as you get into a conversation, if you have a relationship with your local campus or the school, you know, school you work with, feel free to go in there and have that conversation with the principal and, and talk about what you see as the needs are for your, for your local school. This will give you an opportunity between now, our next meeting and obviously the survey, rough draft, we have time. But we will, we want you to be able to go ahead and do your own research in your own community. So we know you're all capable of that, but you guys did ask for some suggested questions. We made sure that you had those. So, and they're pretty generic as you look at them. I, I would suggest you go to the, you go to the school that's in your area. If you went to one of the other schools, nobody's gonna get upset. But yes, going to, obviously, and, and yeah, having that history in the district, but going to the one in your neighborhood is, is what we would suggest. Yes, great question. The question was which school to go to if your kids are raised and you've been through this whole process. You know, we still suggest go to the school in your, in your, in your area where you reside. The question was anybody going to Willow Canyon? And we do have one person that's going to Willow, okay? Excuse me? I do not know, I, I don't need to hear everybody where they're going. If, if two of you end up at the same school for some reason, we'll be okay. I, I think we're, you know, the idea is for us to gather information and be able to bring that back in here. So we're gonna make sure that we debrief that after you do that, okay? Question in the back? Yeah, and then we'd like to hear what you have to say after you've went out and done some of that. You know, we have the two big items to hit the next meeting, but I think that'll be another important piece for us to hit. Ken? Yeah, the, the question was can we get a copy of the draft of the survey ahead of time? I can look into that and see if that's possible and see how early he has that so you guys can review it before we walk into the, the meeting on the 12th. That way you can look at the draft. Absolutely, that's a good question. We will look into that piece. Any other questions that we have tonight? You guys have been great, by the way, of a lot of information tonight and fantastic questions and insight. We get through two more. We get through two more presentations next week and the survey draft. I think that'll help us to start bringing some things together and really consolidate and, and allow us to discuss as a committee, you know, some of those next steps. All right, at this time I'm going to go to our, our next item E on the agenda, adjournment. And if I could get a motion for adjournment tonight. I hear a motion in a second, all in favor? Any opposed? No opposed, we have, I'm 13 minutes over tonight, nine over on the last one, so I owe you 22 minutes next, some point in your life.